This is the City of Wapaka, third Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
Welcome tonight to our regular city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. We are meeting via Microsoft Teams and I'll call this meeting to order and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We should pick someone every time, have them just say it, right? All right. If I was a comedian, I'd be kicked off the stage right now, guys. Thanks a lot. We have the open meeting statements. Sandy, you want to read that?
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And you want to take role for us too, Sandy?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett. Do we know if Steve's on?
I don't see Steve.
I don't either, no.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Paul said that he might not be able to make it. His, I think, his mother is sick, is it, or his father?
Right, yeah, his mother.
Yeah, so.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Puchansky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
There.
Eight present. We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you, Sandy. I do want to recognize too, our staff that's on tonight. We have Aaron Johnson, our city administrator. Sandy Stibs, obviously you've heard from her already, our city clerk. Kathy is on too, right? Kathy Kaza, our finance director, treasurer. Peg, I see Peg in the corner on mine, library director. Tom Hart, our city attorney, is here tonight. Justin Barron's our public works director. Andrew Whitman, our Parks and Recreation Director. Josh Warner, our IT Community Media Director, we heard from him a little bit before. And then subbing for Chief Ozell tonight with probably no complaints is Officer Wes Subey. Wes, thanks. Anybody else? Is Liz Kinnear on also, I think? Is she on yet, Sandy?
I haven't seen her.
I believe we also have Laura Jandisack.
Laura Jandisack instead of Liz Kinnear tonight.
Okay. So who is it? Laura?
Yes, Laura.
Okay. And help me out, Peg. Is she going to be under yours or just under the community part of the department head?
The community, the community. She's here to talk about arts, the arts connection.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else that we know of? Sorry, what?
Mayor, she was having trouble. She came on and then she, there was so much noise, she went off and was going to try to restart again.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll see. We'll get her in. All right. Next up is the consent agenda. Sandy, it looks like you got some items that you have to tell us about.
I'm sure. Under number five, consent agenda, letter A, monthly reports. Number four, the police chief's report for December was uploaded to the city website. It had previously been omitted. And number seven, the city administrator's report was also uploaded. And then under number five, consent agenda, letter D, approval of bills were uploaded to the city website. And that's it.
All right. Thanks, Sandy. Any items that you would like to see council on the regular agenda that are sitting under the consent agenda? If not, we need, we would need a motion to approve the consent agendas with those additions? That, I'm sorry, that's Mary Fair?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Mary Fair, second by Dimitri, that we approve the consent agenda with those additions? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right. And then under regular agenda, Justin, you wanted to make a comment before we acted on that?
Yes, I would, Mayor. So under new business nine B, I'd like to remove that from the agenda tonight. I had some additional information that I need to consider before seeking approval.
All right. So delete that from your agenda for tonight. That's being pulled off, but you'll see it again at a future meeting. All right. With that, then we would need a motion to approve the regular agenda?
Lori, move to approve.
Second, Peterson.
All right. I'm trying to do the Hollywood square here and find out who's talking. It's motion by Lori, second by Dave Pete, that we approve the regular agenda with that one deletion. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, say nay. Anybody that wants to abstain? Motion carried. All right. We have a presentation of a certificate of appreciation to John Bartel for his five years of service to the city. And we, we have a certificate that Aaron has. And, and that's going to go to, well, we got to sign that yet. So Paul Mayo, you'll have to stop by and sign if you get a chance. And we'll make sure that Justin gets that to John. John work, John works in what department? Streets?
He's in our streets department as a skilled operator. And I will present him the certificate along with some donuts.
Oh, nice.
That's what, that's what them guys really appreciate down there is a box of dozen donuts.
So, so we could stop with the certificates and just go with the donuts?
Probably.
All right. Sounds good. Thank him though, for his years of service, Justin. We certainly appreciate his longevity with us. Then we also have, and he's not with us tonight either. He, a presentation of a plaque to John Helgeson for his 25 years of service to the city. Of course, he's a second in command in the police department. So, and Aaron got that too. He showed that. And we'll make sure that Brian gets that to Helgi also. Okay, public input. Anybody have any items for public input? Sandy, Aaron, did we hear anything from the public?
Nope.
No, here, I did not either.
Okay. So no public input. Let's see. Let's go to department head reports and let's, just so it makes it easier for me, let's, let's start with Kathy because I'm still thinking of us being in the council chambers here. So Kathy, you want to start?
Sure. Good evening. And, just a minute. Oh, sorry. I did not put a report into the packet. I've been really, really busy with training Jerry Allen, the new deputy treasurer, on everything. So I just haven't had time to put everything together. We're hoping to continue to train her and get everything caught up. But we're, we're still only one and a half people. So I apologize for not having anything in the packet.
Thanks, Kath. Anything, anybody have any questions for Kathy? Anybody have any requests? I have a feeling she's in her kitchen. So you might.
I'm making miso glazed salmon tonight for dinner.
Ah, nice.
Could I have your address, Kathy?
All right. Let's move over one chair. That's you, Peg.
Thanks, Mayor Smith. Good evening, everyone. We have been discussing as cases start to diminish a little bit and, and things are looking a little better in our community, increasing those service levels for our department. We are still doing a robust curbside service. We still have people coming in to use computers. The next level of service up would be to allow people to use the study rooms. And then from there again, allow people to come in for browsing for limited periods of time. We're going to be really looking at that at the very beginning of February to see what is happening in our community with our weekly COVID meeting with, with the county. And Aaron's involved in that and all of our department heads are there. We're really tracking, you know, where are we compared to where we were last fall when we were open for browsing? So that's an opportunity for us to really make some decisions about opening up a little bit. And we have been extremely busy while this pandemic has been going on. And we've created an infographic and Aaron is sharing that with you on the screen. So while we were, while we've been in this situation, we have 7,252 curbside pickup orders filled. And that means that that's 72, 7,252 bags that have, or boxes that have left our building carried by staff persons. So just consider that. That's a big number. There's no comparable number because we've never done this before. And that's true of a lot of the things that we found this year. Another thing is that we collaborated with other organizations in the community to have take and make it kits. You know, the Arts Board, the Historical Society, the School District, and all of them helped us create kits that would be something that was fun for families and kids to take home and make at home. So trying to enrich their lives at the same time. And while we weren't open for programs, we provided 202 virtual programs. That means all of those things had to be recorded and then they were shared with YouTube or we did them live. So I think we did pretty well in terms of trying to make all that work with the technology. We've learned so much this year and we really may do with what we have. In addition to that, we had four reading challenges in 2020, including having the whole city try and reach five, read 5,000 books this summer. So we had four reading challenge with 607 separate individuals who participated in those challenges. So they also helped with reviews. So that's another big thing that we've done this year. And while we were open for computer sessions, we had 4,901 sessions. And when we were not fully open, but just open for computers from June through December, we had over 2,000 computer session. So we're still serving the public in whatever way we can. And then 7,500 Wi-Fi connections. While we're not fully open to the public, we had 4,349 connections to our Wi-Fi. So they're still using us even though they may not be walking through our doors. And I just wanted to share those figures with you tonight.
Thank you, Peg. Anybody have any questions or comments for Peg? All right. Mr. Public Works Director, Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. My update can be seen on page four, starting on page four of the packet. And so on the wastewater side, our irrigation project is finally complete. I got a picture included, a couple pages below. Aaron, can you please skip to that? Well, it may not look like a whole lot. I mean, we have three blowers now that are on hand. When the plant was last upgraded in 1997, there was 450 horsepower blowers. And since then, our waste stream has changed quite a bit. Churney Cheese has left us. The Foundry and Gusmer have made a lot of improvements with their plumbing. So they're using less water and they're sending a lot less water us. So we have adjusted and we've come up and installed these two smaller blowers. So this one on the left, which is a 75 horsepower, is our latest one. You can still see one of the 150s are left over. And then we have a 50 horsepower blower. And what that gives us is a large range of treatment that we can effectively treat moving forward when flows are down. And we can rely on this 50 horsepower blower and save a lot of energy, which happens a lot, or primarily in the wintertime. And in the summertime, when flows start peaking and we have a lot of high strength loads come through, then we can switch over to the 75 and 150 to optimize our treatment. And then of course, I mean, we can use these to our advantage so that we can control costs and then also maintain a high level of treatment. Streetside Main Street is right around the corner. We're expecting construction to start late March, early April. And right now I'm waiting and basically communicating a lot with the contractor and the engineer that's going to be overseeing the project for us from West Dot. We're trying to schedule a pre-construction meeting. A pre-construction meeting is between, well, we'll be there, the city and the contractor in West Dot. We'll be going over a lot of the aspects of the construction. And once we can get information from there, then we plan on holding one more public information meeting. So sit tight. I'm releasing information as soon as I can on that and start advertising that, but expect that to be probably sometime in March. I did send out letters last week, late last week to the businesses downtown on Main Street that would be affected by the construction and just asking them to respond with updated contact information with, with the intent that in order for us to contact with them, we got to make sure our records are up to date. So we plan on keeping the businesses and the entire city updated throughout the entire project. And that's, I guess, just the first step in all of that. The other thing I'm just going to really highlight is Emerald Ash Bore is here in the city. If you don't know, it's an invasive species. Thanks, Aaron. Yeah. And DNR has found it, or we found it. And we got confirmed by the DNR that it is here. Russ put together a bunch of information. We put out a press release. We put a bunch of information in our newsletter. We sent out letters to residents that we knew had ash in front of their house. And as far as the department, basically this ash bore, this species is, is so destructive. 99.9% of all ash trees die when it's, when this bug is introduced. So the way to slow it down is to cull out the trees. And that's what we're going to start doing. Residents that have ash trees on their property, they can treat it. There is some methods that, that is not too expensive and will last a couple of years. They can contact an arborist if they want to get opinion of what they should do with their trees. And certainly they can contact us and we'll give them an opinion and some options as well. But so for us to be aggressive on this, basically what it means is we're going to be cutting down about 90 to 95 trees in the boulevard and then about 55 trees in the park. So you're definitely going to notice spots where trees are going to be missing. We're going to replace them as we can and as our budget allows. But with those, with all that, that's going to be well over our budget for our tree replacements. So while we can probably cut them down in two years, we probably won't be able to replace them for close to five years. So yeah, that's about it. I'll, I'll just open up to questions.
Thanks, Justin.
Justin, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
This is Mary Fair. So is that what was happening on the Brainerd Road today? Brainerd Bridge Road today, was that an ash tree? That what they were taking down?
Um, I'm not sure.
Oh, okay. I was curious because I happen to see the crew out there taking kind of a big tree down. And I wondered if that was it. Okay.
Just, so what we've done is the trees have been marked with a green X. If you see that green X on it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yep. And if it looks like it's dying, it's probably an ash tree. We have three on Riverside Park or River View Park, excuse me, just downtown that we're going to take care of. We have the ones on Main Street. We have 16 on Main Street. Those will be taken out with the Main Street project. But the other ones that are around in the city should already be marked with a green X.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay. Don't forget that in our, our software, we have that, if you'd like to speak to it, easy way to get somebody to see you is just to hit that raise hand thing and, and we'll try and catch you in the, in the messages there and stuff like that too. So.
Okay.
No, that's okay. But I just wanted to make sure you have, you have another option there.
Scott has a question for Justin yet.
Okay, Scott, go ahead.
Justin, as concerning Main Street, are we, have we decided what end we're going to start on, north or south? Or how is that to be determined?
Yeah. So the project's going to start the north end or north of Fulton. So what's been determined and put into the specifications is that Fulton Street up to Water Street will be done first. So they can start there. They have so many days to get it done. And then they got to flip over to South Main. So basically we're looking at like a phase one and a phase two. However, within the phase one, which is Fulton to Water, there's two sub-stages which spells out getting the work done within the Fulton Street intersection, like in a very short timeframe. So when the, when it first breaks ground, Fulton Street will be focused on very significantly. And we're going to try and get the underground work done first and then pave over it with temporary asphalt. Continue work basically from, you know, Main Street Marketplace or Edward Jones there, north. And then later on the project comeback, finish up Fulton Street intersection and then basically finish up the north half and switch over. So when we switch from phase one to phase two, that Fulton Street intersection will be done until the next time we have to do something with it. So, so yeah, to answer your question, north half first, south half second, keeping Fulton Street open as long as we can.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Anybody else for Justin? All right. Let's move on to Parks and Rec. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Starting down in the senior center, I know I've mentioned it before a little bit, the Helen Bader Grant that they're going after. They're still moving through that process and still in the running for that. And that's to help pay for more equipment for their rock steady boxing, which is very popular in bigger cities, but we're trying to bring something like that here. And that would include some virtual reality as well. You know, you see the commercials on TV with the goggles and that kind of stuff. And what that's for is physical health, mental health. And there's a lot of different ways that people are using them now. So we're going to try to bring that to our senior center as well. So we're really hopeful that, that grant moves forward. Memberships are steady would be the best word to use for it as they're moving forward. Remember back in November, we opened up free memberships for veterans for 2021. And we've had 30 veterans sign up for that already. So a lot of them were new members. And, and that's a really good thing to, you know, get them into that, you know, into our programs and just, you know, visiting people, meeting people and that kind of stuff. So in the office here, we're working on our annual report. If you remember last year, we created an annual report, lots of pictures, lots of graphs and that kind of stuff. So we're giving a second go at that. So that will come out hopefully in February at some point. Working on an activity guide, which we kind of stopped when we got into COVID because of so much uncertainty of our programs. But we're hopeful that as we lead towards the summer, we can get back to some normalcy in our program. So we're working on that activity guide to get that out to the school as well. Riverside Park, because of some really good weather, our, our crews were able to update that shelter down there. So go ahead and take a look at that. It looks really good, especially on the inside. If you remember before, it was just open wood frame, ceiling and sides. And so it's, it's really a big improvement. And I like to, you know, just congratulate the guys. They worked really hard down there, Josh and Casey, and got it done very quickly. We're also giving it a third try on an ice rink. Trying to kind of keep it under wraps so people aren't down there messing with it. But we're trying to do an ice rink at the lower south part shelter parking lot. So we just started on Monday. Luckily, we hit that pretty well with really cold weather. So that's starting to freeze. And we'll post that when it's open. So go ahead and go stop down there and take a look as well. Programs, we have beginner and intermediate soccer coming up that's at the school again. So we'll follow the same rules that we did for beginner and intermediate basketball. And that went really well in this COVID era. We have two fishing tournaments going on right now, virtual fishing tournaments. And so there's an adult one and a youth one. They can catch fish, take measurements, put a link in there or a graph, a graphic of like a code, and then they can submit those fish. So we have some really good prizes there. Our medallion hunt is going to start here in February. We just finished up what I feel are some pretty tough clues. Cassandra and I are going to go incognito and hide the medallion here some night. We're hoping to do it right before it snows. So we don't leave tracks all over the place. So we'll be hiding that. And hopefully the community gets on board with that. We're looking at some really neat prizes for that as well. And then if you remember, we did that nurse appreciation packages with a lot of support from the community, from businesses, from people, our youth center staff. We were able to give over 150 of those out to all, every nurse at Theta Care and then all the nurses at Bethany as well. Now, I know we probably missed some people and, and we were hopeful that we could get as many as possible. And I think we really did a good job with that. And there's a lot of smiling faces on the nurses as we gave them that. So I just appreciate the community's support and all the support on that. And, and hopefully that's something we can continue even in a non-COVID year. So that's it for us.
Andrew, thank you. Yeah, make sure you keep it on the hush. We're on Facebook and on our city website and.
Yeah, I finally, I finally put it on Facebook today because we didn't, we don't want people to go on it until it's completely frozen. But, you know, we, we, as I said, it's our third try. So that means we had two unsuccessful tries and, and we're just really hoping that we got it this time. So we'll, we'll see how it goes.
All right. I was also a little surprised. The department had a meeting this morning. Andrew said, keep it on the DL, don't tell anyone yet. And he shared it. So I like it. Yep. Good enough.
Well, you know, as cold as it's been, we've gone from complete water yesterday morning and it's, it's probably halfway there. So it'll freeze real fast because of this weather.
Yeah, yeah. It's supposed to get colder as the week goes on. So good. Andrew, thanks. Any questions for Andrew? Comments? All right. Let's move over to the Police Department Sergeant Zubey.
All right. Thank you. So I was actually given two memos from the chief for both the meeting that occurred December 8th for the Police and Fire Commission and January 12th. The commission was advised that Finance Director Kathy Kaza had applied for and received a Department of Justice grant. We were awarded $10,000. This grant is used for protective equipment and supplies because of COVID-19. The department is going to purchase supplies to help keep our office and the squad cars clean and sanitized. Both Officer Randy Bush and Ryan McCuskey have passed their probationary period. Officers' probationary period lasts a year and a half. During that time, officers meet monthly with their assigned supervisor and discuss their performance. Officer Bush and Officer McCuskey are actually our two PSLOs. Officer Bush replaced me when I got promoted at high school. And they're both doing a great job with the students and the staff at Wapaka School District. The commission was advised that the assessor from the Wisconsin Law Enforcement Accreditation Group reviewed our use of force policy and found our policy in compliance. This policy includes the prohibition of chokeholds for compliance, except in situations where lethal force is allowed. The commission approved the hiring of and was introduced to our new administrator, Tiffany Dotson. The commission approved the hiring of and was introduced to our new administrator, Tiffany Tatsoi. Tiffany began her full-time employment on December 28th, and prior to starting here, worked at Wapaka County Jail for four years. The commission approved Chief Hozell to carry over an additional week of vacation because of COVID-19 and him not being able to use as much. The commission was advised of an accidental shooting that occurred in November where a male shot himself in the leg while seated by a campfire by himself, practicing loading and unloading his gun. He was transported to a medical facility, and charges were referred to Wapaka County District Attorney's Office for intoxication use of a firearm. The commission was advised of seven drug arrests that resulted in two search warrants in December. During those search warrants, methamphetamine with a street value of $3,600 was recovered, as well as other drug paraphernalia. The commission was advised of a stolen vehicle investigation that is still ongoing. The vehicle was stolen in Wapaka and recovered by another agency. The investigation is ongoing, and a known suspect is still being sought for questioning. The commission was advised of a sexual assault investigation that involved two victims being assaulted by the same subject. The suspect was taken into custody and charged with fourth degree sexual assault. The commission was advised of a performance report for both Officer Van Dinter and Officer Wasrude. The two officers worked together during their shifts to update our field training policy and manual. The updated manuals fall more in line with our current practices and now have competencies that officers need to prove prior to moving to the next phase of field training. And the commission was also advised that the Wapaka Police Department is going to participate in Adopt a Family this holiday season. Wapaka Police Officers and commission members donated money to buy Christmas presents for a family. This year, we raised $250 to buy a family what they needed. A special thank you to older person Lori Chestnut, who found a family in need for us to donate to. We can't thank older person Chestnut enough for the work that she does to help us out with that. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you, Wes. Any questions for Wes or comments? All right, let's move next door there to Josh and the IT Department.
Okay, my community media staff and I have been working on doing a review of what community media does. I'm looking at new ideas or new ways of doing things, or maybe some things that don't make sense. We did that survey last fall, so we took those into account. And that's something I'll be presenting at a future meeting, kind of some, kind of where we're at with that. Over the weekend, did a move with our hosting for our city website. Still the same site, just moved it kind of from one server package to another one with some upgrades. Did some training with staff on the new setup in the state council chambers with some of the new technology we have in there. And hopefully sooner than later, we'll get to take advantage of some of that. Spent some time at the really nice park shelter at Riverside Park and at our water towers, scoping out some additional security cameras we'll be putting in soon. Been working with community and economic development in the clerks department on a software evaluation for some software we're looking at to handle all of our licensing permitting applications. And we've narrowed down to a final package, and Aaron's working with that vendor to kind of finalize pricing. I'm really excited how user-friendly it is, both for staff and the public. And I think the efficiencies it can bring us. It was a good process, and I think it's going to help out a lot. And, you know, perfect timing for something like this with more people used to doing things at home and not always coming somewhere. It's going to keep us, kind of keep us timely with what the public expects. And then kind of the last update with Wapaka Online. I do not think we'll be moving forward with putting equipment on the Co-op and Reed Field. Our insurance company is not willing to issue the required insurance for that, and we can't get both parties to agree on that, so that's probably not moving forward. I just started a conversation this week with our second choice location. New London Schools has a tower at the Reed Field School, and that's kind of the next site in line that looks good. So we're starting, continuing a conversation with them to see if that's a possibility. And then our grant that we applied for through the PSC for the project we proposed last fall, they don't have an actual date when they're going to issue the awards, but I suspect probably late next month. I'm hoping to hear something. I did a recent check. There have been no objections filed against our application so far. There's a total of $62.5 million of grant requests and fighting over $24 million, so very competitive. That's all I've got.
Thanks, Josh. Anybody have any questions for Josh? Comments? Yeah, I'm looking forward to using your new technology, too, down in the council chambers. We'll just have to, when we get there, we'll get there, I guess. All right, let's zigzag across the room there in the council chambers and go to Sandy.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. My report can be found on pages 27 and 28 in your packet. As a reminder, back at the August election, or council, excuse me, council approved the purchase of two new voting machines to replace the ones that we currently use. With that, we learned, after that, we learned that we could actually put those purchases in the Road to Recovery Grant. So the city had saved $14,700 by doing that. So I was very, very happy with that. And then now we've just learned that the machines will not be here in time for us to use for February and April. So we'll be using the old things still. Also, speaking of elections, we do have a February primary on the 16th. The only thing on the ballot will be Superintendent of Public Instruction. There are seven candidates running for that office. My ballots will be here next Monday, the 25th. And by statute, I have to have them out in the mail on Tuesday, the 26th. So if anybody in the public is listening and is expecting their ballot, then watch for it next week. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Sandy. Any questions or comments for Sandy? Okay. Aaron, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. As Sandy mentioned earlier in the meeting, my report was uploaded to the packet. You can see it on your screen now. The first thing I want to talk about is strategic plan updates. We're really getting back to making sure we're staying abreast of the strategic plan. Staff in our department had a meeting today, spoke about all of the updates that they've made. And we're also planning to communicate more with council over the course of 2021 on what's the status of some of the things that we're working on. There's a number of items that we checked as, hey, we have to review this with council. And we're going to plan to do that during the first meeting of the month, starting in February each month. So I might be giving some community and economic development strategic initiatives or updates on those one month. Chief Hozell might the next month, Sandy might the next month, so on and so forth. So kind of keep your eye out for that. We're excited to keep everyone up to date on what it's going to look like. Also, working with Walter Jankowski still. I know we communicated today after the meeting, Josh and I did. And it looks like by the end of January, I expected it maybe to be ready this week. But it looks like all of that will be able to be shared online on our website as far as our status updates, graphs, charts, tracking our progress. So that will all be available at the end of the month. Performance reviews, since we haven't had an update in a while. The last couple of months of December, I had the pleasure of engaging in performance reviews with both department heads and community and economic development staff. So that was the last few weeks. Wapaka marketing effort, so we're making the transition right now. Noah Lenke has 28 of his 50 or so videos that he expects to have done. And we said, "Well, why don't we, let's try to make that transition and use some of the 28 and inject it into that micro-targeting marketing strategy that we had." So we had a meeting last week with our partners, Wapaka School District, CVB, Chamber of Commerce, Noah, and then Wapaka County Economic Development Corporation. We actually had budgeted to spend up to $400 a month on this marketing strategy. And it is because of contributions from the County Economic Development Corporation. It looks like we'll be spending $250 a month, and that will be the same as the Wapaka School District. Report on first CDA meeting, you've probably heard this already, and you probably saw it in the last newsletter. But in case you didn't, our CDA met for the first time this last week on Wednesday. As you saw, there's an application that came forward for 201 and 203 North Main Street. And it was a really, really good application. The CDA eventually voted to approve the maximum amount, which is $40,000, $15,000 in facade improvements, and $25,000 in building infrastructure improvements. That is a building that we think has a ton of potential. He's looking to do work on the commercial part, in both commercial suites, residential, facade, looking to restore it back to historical components, and then just a number of infrastructure improvements. So we're really excited. The actual investment is two to one on program dollars. So we think it's a great project to have as the first one. And the CDA actually did say that they would consider an additional $20,000 at a future date upon hearing a project update. So we'll keep you in the loop on that. See, I guess the other thing I want to mention is we did get some good, I want to thank the Wapaka County Post for getting the word out there on that program. That was awesome to see them promote that. And then actually, WBAY from the Valley or Green Bay came in to town, and we got some good press on that, too. So it's good to get the word out. You can have these programs, but promoting them sometimes is the hardest thing. So that was great. Room tax district and zone, something we're working with the CVB and the neighboring townships. We've been in communication with all of the neighboring townships. I just found out, it was either earlier this week or end of last week. Looks like the town of Wapaka and the town of Lind have decided not to participate in it. But we, the town of Farmington, we know is going to. They passed a room tax ordinance. And the town of Dayton, I believe, will be passing their ordinance at the end of this month. So once that ordinance is passed, we'll draft an agreement that would create a room tax zone. We would bring that to council at a future date. We would be looking to keep all of the room tax that we have gotten that comes into the city, and then an administrative fee as the money would come in and it'd get dispersed to the appropriate localities. This is a result of Airbnbs, VRBOs, and all of these units that are around the lakes or in other parts outside of the city. But it also results in more dollars that goes to the CVB for some of the mini grants and things that they give out. So it's a good opportunity, good opportunity for collaboration, and you'll be hearing more on that soon. Comprehensive plan and zoning updates, I won't go through all of these timelines, but I would encourage you to look at the timelines in this report if you have not already or in the past newsletter. I'll throw them up on the page here just so you can look at them. This is, you know, this is a pretty important process we continue to work through. The future land use map was presented at the last Plan Commission meeting. We are going to be sending a part of that meeting and that presentation out in an email to an email list that we collected way early on in this process when we could still gather in groups. And we were talking at the Danes Home. We got about 40 to 50 emails. We'll send that out with this timeline to make sure people are aware of what's happening and can give any input that they may have on the process. And then you'll see the zoning, you know, we're going through Phase Two changes in the zoning code, cleaning up things we missed in that first round. So that's that timeline you see there. And then there will actually be, I don't want to confuse anybody, but there will actually be a Phase Three round for zoning changes. That Phase Three will be basically taking into consideration the future land use map in the comp plan and then talking about rezoning to match that future land use map. We want, to be honest with you, unless there's a pressing project that wants to take advantage of some of that new zoning, we might take a couple of months' break just to get our feet on the ground with the changes we've made. If there's a project that wants to take advantage of that zoning, we're going to keep our foot on the gas and keep moving forward with the process. So another thing that's important to note, our code enforcement officer slash building inspector, Elizabeth, and Jeff, our zoning administrator, are working to clean up some open code violations. This can be in building, public nuisance, zoning. So if you guys hear any feedback on that, just know that we're going through that process. The residents and businesses that we've been working with have been really, really good over the last couple of weeks. But if you hear anything, have any questions, feel free to reach out. And I, well, the last couple of things, Josh touched on the software, so I'm not going to reiterate that other than to say thanks, Josh, and Rhonda and Elizabeth for their work on leading through that process. You will be seeing something likely February 3rd on that. And then also a personnel policy. We're working through a draft personnel policy that addresses some of the things that were addressed in the former FFCRA or the Families First Coronavirus Response Act policy that expired on December 31st. So that you can expect to see on February 3rd as well. Mayor Smith, that's all I have. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody questions, comments? Aaron, can you share with us, or if you know? And I don't think the town of Lind or the town of Wapaka have a whole lot of of those rentals going on in their townships. But do you know why they decided not to do, move forward with it?
Just from my conversations with them, it just seemed like the one or two that were there at this point, just they didn't feel like was worth it for them. And they may revisit it, you know, all of a sudden, if they get a few units or Airbnbs or VRBOs that they're aware of in a year or two, they may ask to join that zone, and we could always amend that zone at that time. But I don't think, I wouldn't expect it's something they'd be looking to do in the near future.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Aaron. So do we know if our guest is on tonight? Is Laura on?
Yes, I'm here.
Hey, great. All right, Laura, well, welcome.
Thank you. So my name is Laura Jandisak. I'm the Adult Programming Coordinator at the Wapaka Public Library. And I want to thank the council for their support of our library projects and also support for the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network, which the library is a part of. It was a result of the Wapaka Cultural Plan that was initiated in 2018. We partner readily and frequently with various divisions of the arts community. And we wish to thank the city of Wapaka and the mayor for their ongoing support. Various festivals and events are possible because of the support. Events like these positively impact our community economically, socially, educationally, and physically. A great example of this is the upcoming Sidewalk Poetry Project. The upcoming resurfacing of Main Street and its sidewalks planned for spring, summer, fall of 2021 will allow us to cover four blocks, both sides of the street, with original poetry embedded into the sidewalks. In preparation for this, the library and the Wapaka Community Arts Board have come together to offer a two-part writing short poem workshop that takes place this Thursday and next Thursday. And those spots are, we had 25 spots allotted for each session of the workshop, and we filled this Thursday's workshop, and I think we're too short of being a full class next Thursday, which is really cool. The workshops will help to teach poets how to create short poems for the sidewalks that will embed their poems into. We asked the city council to help promote and stand alongside us as we work together as an art community in beautifying and creating inspirational sidewalks in Wapaka for visitors and residents to enjoy. Because of your support, we are able to partner with the Wapaka Community Arts Board, the Historical Society, and the School District, and we distributed, as Peg showed, 1,667 take-and-make kits to the community during the pandemic in 2021. We will continue to partner with WCAB and distribute craft kits in 2021 as long as the pandemic dictates. The craft kits are a great benefit to the community, allowing people of all ages to get engaged and inspired as they create. So again, thank you for your support, your past support, ongoing support, and the future support for the arts on behalf of the Wapaka Area Arts and Cultural Network.
Awesome. Laura, thank you for attending tonight. Anybody have any... Anybody have any questions for Laura? Well, again, thank you for attending. I appreciate the information.
Thank you.
All right, let's get into unfinished business. I guess we start with some appointments of the mayor, and I'll turn that over to our council president, Paul Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor appoints the following people to the Community Development Block Grant Committee. John Ryan, Julie Thompson, Dave Peterson, Tiago Souza, Lori Chestnut, and Dick Phillipson. At this time, I need a motion from council to approve the mayor's appointments.
Kealan moves to approve.
Olson second.
Motion by Kealan, second by Olson, to approve the mayor's appointments to the Community Development Block Grant Committee. All in favor, say aye.
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 Against, no. Motion carries. Back to you, Mayor.
All right. Thanks a lot, Paul. Appreciate it. Let's go to new business then. Under 9A, we have an 8,000 digester cover rehabilitation design project award. I can't wait to hear this, Justin.
Thanks, Mayor. 53 is the start of the memo. 8,000 Building is just our oldest building at the treatment plant. It's the original plant. That picture shows that circular tank is one of our two digesters. And you can tell from the picture, it's not a very appealing piece of the treatment plant in the process, but it's something that we really rely on. So with it being built in 1955, it's obviously a very old building. In 1996/7, when they did the major improvement to the treatment plant, they converted that from a digester, that basically just a covered tank. And what we want to do is convert it back to a digester where the cover floats versus being fixed. And the reason why we want to do that is for several reasons. We think we can better manage our sludge, which is just cost. But the more we have, the more cost we have is because we have to truck it away. If we can manage it, treat it, and produce more gas, it's less that we have to truck away. When it's a floating cover versus a fixed cover, it's safer because as the gas is produced, if it floats, it can move. If it can't float, then if it gets over-pressurized, basically the building could crack or explode. And it's getting to that point where we need to take it off and review it and decide what we have to do as far as rehabbing it or replacing it. Where we think we're at is we're going to take it off, inspect it, and put it back into service. But before we can do that, we need to have some help from some design engineers. So we put together an RFP detailing, basically what I summarized in just a few minutes, put that out for bid, and we received four back, which are summarized on that table. Robert E. Lee, McMahon, SCH, and Strand. What we did here, because it's professional services, was detailed that these would be selected on a best value. So the categories we highlighted was project understanding, similar work, firm experience, scope of services, and fees. So they're all weighted value and reviewed by myself and three operators at the treatment plant. What you can see from the table is all of us were in agreement that McMahon provided the best submittal. Not the lowest cost, but the highest quality, the best understanding, which I'm going to explain to you here now. So the next table down shows the total hours that were listed between McMahon and SCH because we identified those two as being the finalists. The design hours and bidding hours are pretty close to being the same. McMahon has quite a bit more in the construction assistance and inspection. That's something that we need assistance on in this project because the cover is going to have to have a pretty complex coating, epoxy paint coating, where it's a long process. It takes a number of steps. And we felt that McMahon hit the nail on the head with that one of detailing that type of effort. So the two proposals, and we had a number of discussions on this. And McMahon, again, just showed that with the site inspections, they would cover us in what we needed for a successful project. They also detailed, or the only ones that kind of detailed, a startup test reviewing our gas equipment so that it wouldn't fail. And they gave us a budgetary pricing for construction. So we added up all those things, even though they were both very good submittals. We're firmly confident that McMahon has a full understanding of this project and will help us be successful for that into the, you know, as we complete this thing. So moving on, this project, we budgeted $300,000 for the construction and $30,000 for the design. They're within that design budget. So I'm asking council tonight to approve going into contract with McMahon Associates for this project not to exceed $28,900 with the funding coming out of the 2021 sewer revenue bonds. Questions?
Yeah, I've got a question. This is Eric. I'm wondering, why does it say 13 partial days? What's up? And why are they only working partial days?
Well, that's what they listed. So what they have in their schedule, and they described in their proposal, is they would come to the treatment plant and inspect whatever's going on for like one to four hours. They described four-hour visits, which is appropriate because we have to take the cover off, and it has to be inspected. That doesn't take a full day. They have to blast off all the old paint, steel, crud that's on there. That doesn't take a full day. When they recoat it, it's kind of the same process and steps. It's a base layer. It's two finished layers. That does not take a full day of a guy standing there watching somebody paint. Instead, it takes, you know, a handful of hours to show up, talk with the contractors, review the work, you know, write some notes, and then head on. So we felt with that kind of description and the number of hours that that was like, they matched what was going to happen perfectly.
All right. Thanks for the explanation.
Yep.
They're on to something with partial days of work, Eric. All right. Anything else? We need a motion then to approve this.
This is Lori. Move to approve.
Kealan, second.
Thank you. Motion by Lori Chestnut, second by Alan Kealan, to approve entering into an agreement with McMahon Associates Incorporated for design, bidding, and construction services of the 8,000 Building Digester Cover Rehabilitation Project in an amount not to exceed $28,900 with funding coming from the 2021 sewer revenue bonds. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Lori Chestnut? Aye. Alan Kealan?
Aye.
Scott Perchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Eight ayes. Motion carried.
All right. Justin, so the next one is B. And remember, when we approved the council agenda, we deleted that for tonight. So let's go on to 9C. And that's you also, Justin.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. So this is on page 63 of your packet, Resolution 1476. This is authorizing a, or giving an authorized representative to file for applications underneath the financial assistance from the DNR. This is needed when we're seeking funds through the Safe Drinking Water Act or the Clean Water Act or Fund, excuse me. We did this back in 2017 with the Lake Street project because I needed this resolution to get the lead service line funds. This is very similar. I'm doing it again. I need an updated resolution to seek these funds again. So with the lead lines that we have in the city, the ordinance that we just, we passed a few months ago, I'm seeking more lead service line fund money, which goes directly to the residents to pay for the service lines, the laterals on private property. The city does not get any of this money, but it is grant funding that I'm seeking, and I need this resolution, which basically identifies the mayor or the city administrator to sign off on these grant applications.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Justin on this proposed resolution? All right. We would need a motion to approve.
This is Fair. I would make a motion to approve Resolution 1476.
Thank you, Mary.
Second.
Martin.
Dimitri, thank you. Second. So we have a motion to approve Resolution 1476. This is authorized representative to file application for financial assistance from the state of Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, no? Anybody would like to abstain? Oh, Sandy, do you want me to do a roll call?
That's okay.
We're okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Motion carried. Thank you. I need to read before I speak, I guess. All right. Let's look at License Report Number 1527, Taxi Driver's Renewal. And Sandy, anything to report on that?
No, nothing.
Okay. We just have one individual on there. And again, as normal, these are all, oh, it looks like the background check has been completed, so we're all set there. We need a motion to approve.
Olson to approve.
Kealan, second.
A motion by Olson, second by Kealan, that we approve License Report 1527. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, no? Anybody who wants to abstain? Motion carried. All right. Dance hall permits. We have three more here. Dance hall permits. We need a motion to approve these.
Fair.
Here's him, second.
Motion by Mary Fair, second by Dave Peterson, to approve License Report 1528, which is a dance hall license. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, no? Motion carried. All right. Aaron and I had a little bit of discussion today about, you know, continuing the virtual meetings and so on. We'll, I, we'll have some more discussion on that and try and get some input from each and every one of you, too. But if you want to just email Aaron what your thoughts are on that, that would be appreciated or you think we're going there. I think we're leaning towards at least another month of virtual meetings. So although I don't want you to get too comfortable sitting in your chair at home, I think we need to get back into the council chambers again sometime. But we got to make sure it's safe and for us to get back there. So, all right. Anybody else have anything for the meeting? Obviously, Go Pack Go, big Sunday game here. Alan, you're making a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, Kealan moves to approve, yes.
All right. You want me out of here, huh? Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Lori.
All right. I know it's tough when Paul Hagan's not here to help us with this. Motion by Kealan, second by Lori, to adjourn till our next regular council meeting on Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021, subject to call. And one other thing before I let you leave here. Don't forget to get those evaluations back about the city administrator. And what was the date you wanted those back by again, Aaron? The 26th?
If they can all be back by January 26th, then we can review on February 3rd.
Right.
Should we pick those up at the city hall?
Yeah. If you'll drop those off in a sealed envelope at city hall, Dave, that would be great.
They don't have one.
You can also, we did email it to you, but you can also pick up a hard copy here at city hall.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Okay. Any vote? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, no? Motion carried. Have a great night, everybody. Drive safe.